Good morning, everyone. This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand for the invocation. It will be given this morning by Chaplain Philip Snodgrass with Mobile County Sheriff's Office, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you that you see us and know us perfectly, for you have created all in your image. I pray that through the work of your Holy Spirit, that you would convict and cleanse us from all unrighteousness and prepare us for your service. Lord, we humbly ask that you would restore us to the glory you intended in the beginning. Lord, grant us your grace, your peace, and your presence. And we ask you that you bless our commissioners and all who enter here for business. Lord, it is for your glory and your honor that we serve, in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, and to the nation, and to God, and to the visible, and to liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain Snodgrass. It's always a pleasure to have you here. Okay, this morning, we have some retirees that we'd like to recognize, and then afterward we have a resolution. We have five retirees for the month of November. We have, and I think we have a couple here today, and everyone is not here. We have Kay Hart, who is our tobacco tax collector with 29 years of service. We have Nair Mahdi, who is our Director of Grants Management with 25 years and one month. We have Donna Jones, Director of Human Resources, 20 years and four months. We have William Turner, also known as Max, with Voting System Management Superintendent, 36 years. And Zachary Dahl, with Employee Relations Manager, Management with four years and seven months, and that's a total of 115 years of service. So let's give them a round of applause. And I know we have Donna Jones and Max Turner here today. If you would please come forward, we want to present you with your certificate of recognition and your pen. Let's give them another round of applause. Are we working now? Yeah, okay. And good luck and best wishes to the both of you. Okay, next, we have a resolution in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I know we have a number of different organizations here with us today. I'm not sure who is present. I know we have Mobile Infirmary, Representative for Mobile Infirmary, if you'll come and join us. Good morning, good morning. Can you tell us your name?
Sure, Nita Taylor.
Judy Stint.
Well, please join us. We have a resolution recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I know you ladies in Mobile Infirmary work very hard, and you both represent Mobile Infirmary, okay? With breast cancer and trying to help the victims and those that are afflicted with it. And all of us, we know somebody. There's either a family member, or a friend, or a colleague, that have had to fight this fight. And I have a very close friend right now, in fact, that's in the middle of that, and it's very hard. And having an institution, having people who understand and help, and whatever they need, holding hands as they go through treatment process means everything. So we appreciate you. And the resolution reads, whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, during this time, we stand with our mothers, daughters, sisters, and friends to recognize all those fighting their own battle with breast cancer. And whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains one of the most frequently diagnosed type of non-skin cancer. However, thanks to earlier detection and better treatments, mortality rates for breast cancer have steadily decreased in the last decade. Whereas knowing that what may contribute to breast cancer, symptoms, diagnosis, and treatment, we are important parts of the prevention, and having affordable access to screenings and early detection for all women is an essential component in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas by educating ourselves and supporting innovative research, we will improve the quality of life. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission proclaims October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In Mobile County, we applaud the vital role of advocates, researchers, and healthcare providers, including the American Cancer Society of Mobile, CARES Health and Wellness, Mobile Infirmary, Mitchell Cancer Institute, Franklin Primary Health, whose care and hard work give those, give hope to those living with breast cancer. Furthermore, we encourage our fellow citizens to become aware of the impact that breast cancer has on our community, and to support the fight against breast cancer, so that we may one day defeat this terrible disease. All right, well, keep up the good work, ladies. Thank you so much for all that you do, again. Okay, Cherie, do we have anyone signed in to speak today?
Yes, ma'am, we have three speakers signed in. Our first is from, he's the Mobile County Health Department Health Equity Officer.
If you would please give us your name, and those, the names of those who are with you today.
Yes, my name is Scanon Ananthasaker, and I am an outreach educator with the Mobile County Health Department's Health Equity Office.
My name is Sequoia Chaney. I'm also an outreach educator with the Health Equity Office.
Good morning, my name is Rita Anderson. I am the Program and Media Support Specialist for the Health Equity Office at Mobile County.
And I'm the newest addition to the Health Equity Office. My name is Lois Collins-Gwen, and I'm the Senior Program Administrator.
Thanks for being here. Welcome.
Thank you. So our presentation is just going to be about what the Health Equity Office is, and our most recent event, which was an environmental cleanup event, just to make sure that the Commission is aware of the work that we're doing in the existence of our office. So, the Health Equity Office was founded about a year and a half ago, thanks to funding from the CDC that came on down through the Alabama Department of Public Health. And we do our work in targeted areas, and these are areas that are underserved and have a high amount of social vulnerability, and also low COVID-19 rates. So these are four areas in Mobile County comprised of 15 zip codes. So when we're talking about health equity, I think it's important to have kind of a shared definition of what that exactly means. So health equity is achieved when everybody has the opportunity to be as healthy as possible, and we give people these tools to be as healthy as possible. So, you know, just talking about how it isn't about just what sickness you have or the disease you have, we know that there are a number of other factors that play into health, and we call these social determinants of health. And these are things like where you live, where you work, how much income you have, and, you know, the parks you have available to you, the grocery stores you have available to you. And a lot of these things are decided at the policy level to, you know, make sure that people are healthy as possible. So when we talk about these different health disparities, and you know why certain zip codes in certain areas have higher rates of diabetes, have higher rates of cancer, have higher rates of all these different chronic diseases, you know, it's important to start kind of upstream at the policy level, to make sure that these people have all the resources that they need to be as healthy as possible. And the important thing to emphasize is that these health disparities are preventable, you know, if we work more at this upstream level, and that's why our office is in existence. So what we do is we want to make sure that Mobile County residents have the resources to be well, get well, and stay well. And we do this in a number of ways. We partner with different organizations in the community to, you know, go to their events, to pass out resources, to pass out education materials, you know, and we do these in a targeted area to make sure that the residents that need the most help are getting the most help. And our most recent event was an Environmental Cleanup Day. And the way that health equity relates to environmental cleanup is that we, environmental, you know, waste, is that we know that a lot of the trash and litter that is discarded, you know, in our streets, and in our parks, and just, you know, in a general ground, it goes into sewage, into our waterways, and it is affecting mostly disadvantaged people who rely on those waterways to make, you know, as a source of living and as a source of diet. So we organized an environmental cleanup with the town of Mount Vernon and the Moaw Community, and I can turn it over to Cherie to tell us more about the cleanup event.
Partnering with our internal department, the Environmental Health Team, we hosted our first MCHD Cleanup Day September 17th. That day consisted of 144 volunteers from the town of Mount Vernon, and joined with the Moaw Community. We cleaned 51 mouths in four hours, collecting 3,250 pounds of trash. Our next focus is to look at waste and recycle, so we can go out there again and do the same thing, and we're very excited about that.
Fantastic, great.
And just to wrap it up and tell you things about, you know, our future projects and what we're working on right now, we're working with community partners to put together a mental health event. So our goal is to do a school tour, and we have a number of schools already on board. So the event is going to be a talent show for the kids slash a health fair, mental health event for both the kids and parents to get resources about mental health, because, you know, as we all know, mental health issues were really exacerbated over, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and people are still feeling the effects of mental health. And then our biggest, our other big project, you know, that we hope to present to the County Commission and the City Council, is declaring racism as a public health crisis in Mobile City. You know, racism, as we look at, you know, the Health Equity Office, we really identify racism as one of the health, the root causes of a lot of these health disparities and health inequities that lead people to have, you know, different health conditions. So we really want to work to make sure that people are not only aware of this, you know, this disparity, but make sure we have actionable items to, you know, kind of mitigate these effects of racism. And we look forward to working with you in the future, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much for being here today. I got to say, you are a high-energy group. You've got a lot going on, and I think it's wonderful, it's great, and look forward to hearing more about all your accomplishments and how you're reaching out to the community to help alleviate those, some of those disparities and get the messaging out. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joy Logan, who's Director of Crittenon Youth Services.
Good morning, Ms. Joy.
Good morning.
I notice you've got a great-looking group of young people here, and you're going to tell us all about who they are, right?
I am. We came to, to thank the three of you for your support over the last many years. It has meant so much to us, and it's enabled us to be able to expand our program from sixth, seventh, and eighth into fifth grade. So my assistant, Ms. Hill, is here with me, and together, our agency has been in existence for over 100 years. So we are very thankful to all three of you. For the first time in my life, I think I'm nervous, would y'all forgive me? Many times, our program is labeled as a program that is so different because of the fact that we deal with topics that are builders. And when I say builders, they're builders for classroom behavior, for classroom feelings, for feelings in their environment, different behaviors that occur in the environment. And we use our juniors and seniors from high school, and we train them to work with our students. And I have to introduce them first. They are the main goal and the main part of our program. All of these students represent 14 high schools in Mobile County. Mobile County Public Schools, City Schools, parochial schools, and private schools. And they work very hard, and the communication that they have with the students is outstanding. You can imagine when a young person walks in, and they're the ones that are working with the students. Thank you so much.
Let's give them a round of applause. When they work with students, what exactly do they do, Joy?
They are teaching emotional and social skills. Many parents, grandparents, teachers will say, you know, I just don't understand why my child is not able to control their emotions, control their behaviors, have empathy for others, develop positive relationships with friends, and the list goes on. There are 12 to 15 social and emotional skills that kids know they have the knowledge, but it's very difficult for them to put them into action in everyday life. So our ambassadors not only talk about these skills, but they interact with the students, and the students interact with each other, so that they get samples and examples of how this is done in real life. For example, just decision-making alone, they practice, how do you do it? What steps do you take? And what are your goals that you finally reach? So we think they're awfully wonderful.
I think so.
And usually, we have anywhere from 35 to 40 representing the public school programs and classes.
It means so much to have a role model, to someone to look up to, especially that's not so much older, that it's, you know, that isn't somebody that's not too far from their own age group and peer group, but to somebody who can, they can look up to as a role model and try to emulate, and I think it's fantastic. I'm so proud. I know I speak for the Commission, we are all proud of you and what you're doing in helping the, your younger people in the schools, the youth that you're interacting with, is just so very important, and please keep up the good work. And thank you to Critten for sponsoring this, too.
Yes, and I just want to add that they are supervised in the classroom. We have instructors that go along with them, just in case there's something that they may not understand, we're there to help them understand, you know, the topics that they're talking about. But they are a great group of kids, and you hit it on the head when you say they relate so well with the young people. They look forward to seeing our ambassadors, and they develop that relationship, they're like big brothers and big sisters to them. So we're very proud of them. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you all being here today, thanks. Absolutely, absolutely. Can we get you to? Do we have any other speakers today, Cherie?
Yes, ma'am, one more speaker is Danny Cordy with Mobile Sports Authority.
Okay, morning, Danny.
Good morning, Madam President. Commissioners, let good and do it. It's another beautiful day in Mobile County, isn't it?
Amen to that.
There you go. Just for the record, Danny Cordy, Executive Director of Mobile Sports Authority, and we're at 301 Government Street. As a sports tourism owner for both Mobile County and the city of Mobile, we proudly represent you as the county and the city, as we continue to work to bring those visiting sporting events to the Mobile area. And we could not have achieved our recent successes without both your investment and your blessing. So we, I just want to say thank you so much for the confidence you've shown in us. But what I wanted to do today is just give you a little update. Of course, we, we're in the same fiscal year as the city and county. We just completed our IRR fiscal '22, and as a summary to that, I want to let you know that the NSA attracted, hosted, and has supported 30 sporting events over the last 12 months, which generated an estimated $14.3 million in economic impact to the Mobile area. Now, that does not include, usually, our largest annual event, the Gulf Coast Challenge, because they're not only in the schedule, the last Gulf Coast Challenge was actually held in September of last year, which of course was fiscal '21, and the next one is coming up in a few weeks, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. Those 30 events involve 22 different sports, such as basketball, gymnastics, volleyball, baseball, track and field, wrestling, football, soccer, and even a world turkey calling championships, plus many others. As for another notable number, eight of those 30 events held last year, last fiscal year, were either first- or second-time events for us, and even more importantly, 17 of those 30 events were what we term youth-oriented, and that means competitors ranging from ages of 4 to 19 years old. So that, Willem, is the gold standard in the sports event industry, is the youth, because, of course, we all know they bring parents, grandparents, siblings, so economically for us, they're always a lot better, but they're also sometimes tougher to get, too. And I mentioned the Gulf Coast Challenge, and we're real excited about what's coming up in about two and a half weeks. Next month's Gulf Coast Challenge, powered by the Mobile Sports Authority, is our fifth annual Gulf Coast Challenge, and it will feature Coach Deion Sanders, otherwise known as Coach Prime, and his Jackson State Tigers, and they'll be hosting the Alabama A&M Bulldogs at Land People Stadium on Saturday, November 12th, with a 4:00 p.m. kickoff. As, if you've kind of followed what's going on with Coach Prime, which is what he likes to be called, he's already raised the level of the HBCUs to great heights, and we expect a huge crowd in town in two and a half weeks. As a little history, in the previous four Gulf Coast Challenge games, we estimate that 36,000 visitors have come through Mobile, which had generated an economic impact estimated of about $17 million to our local economy just on those four games. And this year's game, because of Coach Prime, could be the biggest of them all. As you might have heard, College Game Day is going to Jackson State this Saturday, which is the weekend before our game, so any kind of publicity that Coach Prime gets will hopefully help us have a big crowd on Saturday, the 12th. And that's not the only thing, just the games going on. We have a college and career fair for our local students on the Wednesday before the game, a concert in Mardi Gras Square the Wednesday night, comedian Kevin Hart's in town on that Thursday night, another concert with the Isley Brothers on Friday night at the Civic Center, and a traditional Mardi Gras-style parade will be held Saturday at 11:00 a.m. in downtown Mobile. And of course, the Game Day is And of course, the Game Day is tailgating and culminating in the game itself. And with all that stated, the Gulf Coast Challenge is the most economically significant annual event hosted by the NSA. It's our largest event, and we, again, we believe this year could be one of the largest sporting events, senior sporting events we've had in Mobile in over a decade, if not longer. So we're real excited about that. And in addition to the Gulf Coast Challenge, we already have about twenty other confirmed events between now and the end of fiscal '23. So we're putting our money to work, and again, we're really proud to be representing the city and county of Mobile out there as we tell our story. And again, it would not happen with your investment. So I want to thank you very much, and of course, we're always available for answering questions or talk about anything you have on your mind. So thank you so much again.
Thank you so much, Danny, for giving us that update. This is exciting, a lot going on, and especially in the next couple of weeks, it sounds like. Okay, great. Look forward to that.
No more speakers, ma'am.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Glenn, you will, please.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 11, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report.
The public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this matter? There being none, the public hearing is now closed.
Number four, approve requests of the Sheriff's Office to add one internally purchased vehicle to their fleet as follows. The addition of this vehicle will not increase their fleet.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, adopt a resolution declaring certain items assigned to the county garage surplus and authorize their removal from the fixed asset list to be disposed of by lawful means.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve requests of the city of Bayou La Batory to purchase the following surplus vehicle from the county garage for fair market value as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve appropriation contract with the city of Bayou La Batory. Any amount of five thousand from District Three funds for purchase of a vehicle declared as surplus from county garage.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve lease agreement with Sims Women's Club, Inc., and Mobile County Commission for a ten-term, oh, excuse me, ten years, beginning on January 1st, 2023, and ending on December 31st, 2032.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve reappointment of the City of Citronelle Chief of Police, Christopher McLean, to continue to serve as member of the Board of Commissioners of the Mobile County Communications District for a term of four years.
So moved.
Second.
Number ten, adopt a resolution declaring certain items assigned to the county garage surplus and authorize their removal from the fixed asset list to be disposed by lawful means.
So moved.
Second.
Number eleven, approve request of Grand Bay Fire District to purchase the following surplus vehicle from the county garage for fair market value as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Number twelve, approve appropriation contract with Grand Bay Fire District. Any amount of three thousand five hundred from District Three funds for purchase of a vehicle declared as surplus from the county garage.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirteen, approve contract with the city of Chickasaw, any amount of a hundred and fifty thousand from District One funds for Chickasaw Valley Road Drainage Project.
So moved.
Second.
Number fourteen, approve professional services agreement with Logical Computer Solutions, Inc., for a three-year term beginning November 1st, 2022, for a monthly fee of one thousand eight fifty for design, monitoring, and management of complete disaster recovery backup computer server system of exchange, SQL, and web servers for probate court.
So moved.
Second.
Number fifteen, approve professional services agreement with Logical Computer Solutions, Inc., for a three-year term beginning November 17th, 2022, for a monthly fee of three thousand one hundred, and shall automatically renew on a month-to-month basis unless a different term is agreed upon in writing by the parties for design, monitoring, and management of complete disaster recovery backup computer server system of Pioneer Database, web servers, and application servers for probate court.
So moved.
Second.
Number sixteen, approve appropriation contract with African Town Heritage Preservation Foundation in amount of one hundred and fifty thousand from District One funds for general operations and conservation of the Old Plateau Cemetery.
So moved.
Second.
Number seventeen, approve sponsorship agreement with the Quotilda Descendants Association in amount of three thousand five hundred from District One funds for its annual Spirit of Our Ancestors Festival.
So moved.
Second.
Number eighteen, approve sponsorship agreement with Distinguished Young Women of Alabama in a total amount of three hundred dollars to be divided as follows for its Distinguished Young Women of Alabama program.
So moved.
Second.
Number nineteen, approve sponsorship agreement with Family Counseling Center of Mobile, Inc., doing business as Lifelines Counseling Services in a total amount of seven thousand five hundred to be divided as follows for its annual Bay Brunch Fest fundraising event.
So moved.
Just didn't talk to Boyon Callie. She asked that this be postponed until the spring. Do we want to go ahead and just adopt it and have it done?
I think we should go ahead and adopt it with caveat that the funds will be expended in the spring as opposed to when the original date.
Second.
Excuse me. Number twenty, approve amendment to sub-recipient agreement with South Alabama Regional Planning Commission, Inc., for provision of the senior services program to extend the term of the agreement from October 31st, 2022 to April 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-one, award bid to Shade America, Inc., for Sims Community Center Park Shade Structures for a total bid in the amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-two, authorize advertising and receiving bids for three-year detention lock, inspection, and cleaning.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-three, rescind change order number two with Hughes Plumbing and Utility Contractors for the project, African Town Heritage House.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-four, authorize assignment of Dale Consulting to Government Plaza Auditorium Light Upgrade for a proposed fee of six thousand dollars. Work will consist of the design, bidding, and construction administration associated with replacement of the lighting fixtures and associated lighting controls for the Government Plaza Auditorium.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-five, authorize advertising and receiving bids to rebid project Whistler Bicycle Trail Park Improvements. No bids will receive.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-six, reject all bids and authorize advertisement to rebid Revenue Commissioner Teller Window if bids exceed its budget.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-seven, authorize advertising and receiving bids for project installation of emergency generator at African Town Heritage House.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-eight, award bid to Tindal Construction LLC for A4 renovations and information technology training room revisions for a total bid in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-nine, adopt a resolution approving South Alabama Utilities merger with MCB Water Authority, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirty, approve appropriation contract with Gulf Quest Marine Time Museum of the Gulf Coast in amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred for installation of the exhibition Spirits of the Passage to be available for viewing from January 4th, 2023 through June 17th, 2023, subject to completion of documentation.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, before you move forward, can we go back to twenty-nine for just a second? Is there, the MCB Water Authority have a board? And are we going to need to take action to dissolve that board if they're merging with South Alabama Utilities?
Information for you.
Okay. That's fine. I just want to make sure that we take care of that in the future.
Very valid question. It's a very small authority. I know they have, as far as the geography they cover and their clientele, they have, it's just in the hundreds, it's numbered in the hundreds, is it not? So it's very small, but I don't know, we don't know who operates them.
No, I mean, I'm sure they, I'm sorry.
Mabaco Buck has a board, three-member board. They have voted, they've sent a resolution asking us to approve the merger. Yeah, and that's...
I was just, I mean, I'm sure that we'll need to...
They initiated the merger with South Alabama Utilities. This is what they wanted.
But the structure of the governing board doesn't change, so that hasn't been part of the discussion.
Right, and I guess my, I don't have an issue with that if that's what they have chosen to do, but if we're the appointing authority, I think we need to take action in the future to dissolve that, to dissolve that board if they're merging, is my question. Does that make sense?
Yeah. We will leave that to Jay, let him...
I can't hear you at all, Commissioner.
We will leave that to Jay when he gets back to apprise us of what we need to do, if we need to take any steps.
I think the Commissioner is correct. We probably do need to do something once this is more finalized.
Yeah, once this is finalized, okay.
Linda, did you have something to add? Okay.
What was that?
Commissioner, it appears that in this resolution that it's already done.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, then that takes care of all that.
So it automatically dissolves that?
It says dissolution of the MCB Board.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Carry on. I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure that we did, so...
Okay, so we have finished with Agenda Item Thirty.
Yes.
Okay, we can move along.
Number thirty-one, approve amendment number seven to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Mott McDonald, Alabama, LLC, dated June 25th, 2021, to add Task Eight bidding and construction, engineering, and inspection services for project Bayfront Park Restoration and Improvement.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve grant application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs on behalf of Mobile County District Attorney's Office for the continuation of Domestic Balance Initiative Grant in amount of sixty-three thousand with a local grant, a local match of twenty-five percent. The application is due to be submitted no later than midnight on November 9th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-three, approve appointment of Angie Goudreau to represent District Three as the Member of the Board of Revenue for the Mobile County Junk Control Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-four, approve contract with Hydra Services, Inc., in amount of twenty-one thousand four sixty-one fifty-six for replacement of the Sludge Lagoon Pump at the North Mobile County Industrial Park. This project will be paid out of the Environmental Services Department budget.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-five, approve renewal support agreement with Unity Fiber in amount of seven thousand three eighty-three oh one for two-ring dashboards and wallboards, three-year support for the county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-six, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-seven, approve renewal generator preventive maintenance agreement with Thompson Cat from the current purchasing to cooperative agreement Source Well contract in total amount of forty-one thousand two twenty-two eighty-six for the following locations for the county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-eight, approve thirty-six-month lease agreement with Xerox from the current state of Alabama contract in the amount of one thousand five seventy-six thirteen per month for the following for the licensed commissioner office.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-nine, approve contract with Alight Solutions, LLC, to provide application management services related to the workday system for a period of twelve weeks, subject to final legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty, approve recommendation of the Mobile County Board of Health to add the following proposed fees as required by Section 1 Act 80-332.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty-one, adopt a resolution observing Operation Green Light for veterans in Mobile County from November 7th, 2022 through November 13th, 2022, to shine a line of appreciation, hope, and support for our nation's veterans.
So moved.
Second, I think that line should be light, though.
Should be what?
Light. Shine a light.
Oh, light. We'll change that, Commissioner. Forty-two, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of the right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-three, adopt a resolution authorizing acquisition of certain real property by eminent domain for project Williams Road and Lloyd Road Track 23.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-four, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below for roads, segments of roads, and subdivision streets.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-five, approve preliminary and final plat of D&amp;J Corner and preliminary and final plat of resubdivision of lots 54 and 55, Mandrills, addition to Hollinger's Island.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-six, authorize assenting to county engineer's approval of an extension of the approval for the preliminary plat for one year from the previous date of approval.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-seven, approve Miles App Road continuing to the program for acceptance, maintenance, and regulation of certain unimproved roads in accord with Act 2019-307, and be granted one additional year to complete all requirements set out in the act for the acceptance into the road, county road maintenance system. Report from the county engineer pertaining Miles App Road was accepted by the county commission March 28th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-eight, approve reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on private-public right-of-way with Alabama Power Company for project Booth Town Road and Mason Ferry Road Braid, Drain, Base, and Pave. Estimated cost, Mobile County, is forty-one thousand seven seven six.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-nine, approve change order number two for project Part Two, Mobile County Soccer Complex Concession and Restrooms Facility for changes to the interior, exterior, modifying HVAC enclosure and adding chain-length enclosure gates to transform enclosure. The change will increase the contract by nineteen thousand three five nine.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty, approve to provide four million dollars for the design and construction for the Mobile County Soccer Complex, Phase One and Phase Two.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-one, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track Five in amount of four thousand five hundred for project Warren Street, Turner Turn West, and North Watson Avenue Bridge.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-two, commission announcements and/or comments.
Well, I'd just like to congratulate Commissioner Hudson and his staff on really the extraordinary event at Escatawba Hollow and campground last Friday. Well-attended, and I just watched people's faces as they watched. I know how hard you worked on this, how hard staff has worked on this, and I think we did a, you did a really good job of helping people to understand how the county was able to afford to do it and explaining the phases and all of that. So I just wanted to say head talk to you for that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I appreciate you being there. It was a gorgeous, gorgeous day. It could not have been better. And I think you're right, the people who attended just were very excited, I think, finally to get it open, but to see what great amenities are there, and to realize that that was, that's just the beginning, that there's a lot more to come. And so I couldn't be more pleased, and I know that Chickasaw Bog Park is undergoing the exact same thing, and when that one opens, there'll be a lot of rejoicing as well. So anyway, thank you. Do it, you have anything? All right.
We don't have any. Do we?
We have an indigent.
We do have an indigent.
Yes, we do.
We're just making sure.
Number fifty-three, approve request for motion to adjourn till November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. We stand adjourned. The Indigent Care Board meeting is now called to order.
Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting of September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, accept a report from the Mobile County Commission of the balance in the Indigent Care Fund at September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Funds available, two hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve the disbursement of the Indigent Care Fund cash receipts on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two for the period July twenty twenty-two through September twenty twenty-two to the following entities in the following amounts.
So moved.
Second.
And number four, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Meeting stands adjourned.